Good evening. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you again for joining us. We do have some folks that are attending with us virtually, including a couple of school board directors. So we're going to do a roll call. First, we'll start with the folks that are here. Director Rob Perkins.
Present.
Director Victoria Bradford.
Present.
Superintendent John Boyd.
Present.
Administrative Assistant Lori Stroll. Board Director Jaclyn Witherspoon, who's virtual.
Present.
And President Ginny Gronewald, who is also attending virtual.
Here.
Great. Thank you. All right. So the first thing on our agenda this evening is the land acknowledgement. So I'm going to turn it over to Director Perkins, who's going to read that for us.
Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Cowat's tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Thanks, Rob. All right. Next is to adopt this evening's agenda. We'll entertain a motion for that.
I move for adoption of tonight's agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Did we get both folks online? Great. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to special recognition. First, it is Teacher Appreciation Week. And to kick this off, we have a proclamation that Director Bradford is going to read for us this evening.
Okay. It's my honor to do that. Okay. State of Washington proclamation. Whereas a strong, effective system of free public school education for all children and youth is essential to our democratic system of government, and whereas the United States has made considerable progress in the social, technological, and scientific fields due to our system of free and universal public education, and whereas much of this progress can be attributed to the qualified and dedicated teachers entrusted with the educational development of our children, and whereas teachers provide opportunities for students to connect with the world around them, develop basic skills for success in life and work, and experience the realization of high expectation and the fulfillment of steps toward achievable goals. And whereas teachers should be accorded a high public esteem, reflecting the value placed on their skills and abilities and the importance of public education, and whereas it is appropriate that teachers be recognized for their dedication and commitment to educating their students. Now, therefore, I, J. Insley, Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim May 2nd through the 6th, 2022, as Teacher Appreciation Week and May 3rd, 2022, as Teacher Appreciation Day in Washington. And I encourage all people in our state to join me in this special observance. And he signed that the 18th day of April, 2022.
Great. Thanks. Do we have, who's coming up to, except Bill?
Bill.
I wondered if it was you.
Yeah.
With the folder.
Come on up, Bill. I'm trying to find the, oh.
Well, I got switched in the middle of it all, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Of course.
I definitely, first, I want to say thank you for this acknowledgement and for the governor's order. Obviously, this is always a tricky time of year. We are in that spot where it's always bittersweet because we are also, once again, looking at cuts to some of our new teachers that we have just established working great in our schools and adding so much to the environment that we teach in. But I understand that this was given in good faith towards us and appreciate all the work that teachers have done through the absolutely insurmountable challenges that COVID has brought and just general, the state of education in general. And I just would encourage you to continue to look at all parts of the budget that make sure that there's no stone unturned, that we're absolutely accessing everything that we can to make sure that we retain as many educators as possible. I use the term educators. I know the week became Teacher Appreciation Week, but I'm constantly reminded we're full of people that work in the educational climate that are important, not just teachers. So I just wanted to make that comment as well. But thank you.
Thanks. If I could just, I just want to add one thing. It's been so fun to watch Craig and his team going out to all of the buildings and taking pictures of all of the great teachers that we have out there because you can just tell the joy and pride they have in their jobs, that they take great care of our students. So just wanted to add that.
It's been nice to see. This week always makes me think of my teachers and growing up in the district and then coming back and having my kids there and watching the teachers I had finish their careers out and retire. And it's just, when I think of the pandemic, Bill, I think of the fact that you and your colleagues lost the classroom. And the classroom was the place where you received the assurances that you were doing a good job. You could see the response of the kids there. And still, the effort that went into the online learning and the advocacy that went into it really showed a deep regard and affection for children and students. And I thank you and your colleagues for that.
I think that every year when we talk about teacher appreciation and all that, I always remember my favorite teacher, who a long time ago, was my fourth grade teacher, Mr. Tovey. And he's the one that really got me jazzed about science, which I know Rob's thinking, Victoria, and science. But I actually just got really into it and biology and all of that. And he saw through, you know, my, you know, personality and the way I like to be, and he got me engaged. And I also, he was my first real example of someone who knows how to show a kindness to a student. Because we had a student that now that I look back as a 60-something-year-old lady, I realize was probably being abused at home. But he made sure that he had a sandwich every day that he brought because he always brought extra lunch. And so I just, that will never leave me. And it definitely formed what I believe about educators. So thank you. Because I know we have those same Mr. Toveys in our system. Yeah.
Lots.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. All right. Next recognition, special recognition is for School Nurse Day. And to read this proclamation is Superintendent Boyd.
Yeah. And I just want to thank Bill for acknowledging the bittersweetness of Teacher Appreciation Week. While we're celebrating the great work of all of our teachers, we're also mourning the loss of several. We've had to reduce significantly in our teacher corps, and it is bittersweet. So thank you for acknowledging that. I think that's really important to celebrate the good work, but also acknowledge the loss as well. But it is my privilege and pleasure to read the proclamation of our school nurses. And there's no, man, you talk about an employee group that has brought it over the last couple of years and has really talked about earning your keep. I mean, they have just been absolutely invaluable over the last couple of years. So it's my pleasure to read the proclamation about the nurses. Whereas students are the future, and by investing in them today, we're ensuring that our world for tomorrow. And whereas families deserve to feel confident that their children will be cared for when they're at school, and that all the schools, all students have a right to their physical and mental health needs safely met while in school setting. And whereas students today face more complex and life-threatening health problems with increases in students presenting with behavioral health challenges, asthma, diabetes, epilepsy, and food allergies requiring care in schools. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has emphasized the essential role that our nurses play in student health and in academic success, with school nurses implementing COVID prevention, detection, and isolation measures needed to maintain open schools during the pandemic. And whereas school nurses have served a critical role in improving public health and ensuring students' academic success for more than 100 years, and act as liaisons to the school community, families, and healthcare providers on behalf of children's health by promoting the wellness and improving the health outcomes for our nation's children. School nurses address the home and community factors that impact students' health and support the health and educational success of children and youth by providing access to care when children's cognitive development is at its peak. So I'd like to invite Matt Bill up to the podium to introduce our nurses and help celebrate them with us.
Thank you, John. You know, I had written a very nice speech, but I think that you must have gotten it from me right off my desk because you said about what I was going to say. But I did want to draw a light that our nursing staff in Evergreen Public Schools is a small one, of only 18 certified nurses. And it's guided by Holly Long, our manager of nursing services, and our two office staff, Danielle and Deanna. So they provide all of the health guidance and support and services for all of our students, staff, and really facilitate that piece between home and school and health for all of our students. So tonight, I bring to you Megan Reynolds and Heather Jensen, Heather Rice, and speaking tonight on behalf of the nurses is Maggie Conlon Marks.
Thank you, Matt. I just have a few words to say, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. I wrote it down because I get nervous in front of groups. So I just want to say thank you on behalf of all of our Evergreen School District nurses for this recognition. Thank you for acknowledging the accomplishments and efforts in meeting the needs of today's students by improving the delivery of healthcare in our schools. School nurses understand the link between health and learning and are in a position to make a positive difference for children every day. Children today face complex and life-threatening health problems requiring care in the school setting. School nurses assist in the well-being and academic success of all students by acting as a liaison to the school community, parents, and healthcare providers on their behalf, advocating for their health and educational needs, including those with physical and mental disabilities. Reflecting on our practice as a group this year, this past year, I feel we have helped to clarify uncertainty and hopefully calm fears through understanding and empathy, making a somewhat challenging year also a rewarding one, especially during a global pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can't even understate the level of stress and challenge that our school nurses have faced in the last couple of years. It's really quite admirable. I'm hoping that they never have to face anything like that again. And I just, I want you all to know that we know in the face of all kinds of criticism, misinformation, just anxiety coming from multiple directions, you all behaved like professionals and did what was right for our kids, and I really appreciate that.
Thanks, Victoria.
I could speak, just as my experience as a parent. There was a point in time when one of my kids was in middle school. And the principal's team, the teachers, and the nurses stood together. And I say this with complete honesty. I think they helped save my son's life. And I'm so glad that they're there. The school nurse was, I think, integral to designing the efforts that went out on behalf of my child.
Thinking that we should see if Ginny or Jaclyn have anything they want to add from virtual land? Good? All right.
I'm sorry. What was that?
I was wondering if you had any comments that you wanted to add from virtual land?
Sorry, no, I don't.
Okay. Thanks. I just don't want you to think that we're forgetting about you over there.
No, we're here.
Okay. So next on the agenda is our board consent agenda. And so we will entertain a motion for approval.
I move adoption of the board's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. Next is superintendent consent agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move for approval of the superintendent consent agenda as proposed.
Second.
Moved in second. And all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Thank you. All right. Next up is the superintendent report. So I'm going to pass it over to Superintendent Boyd.
Thank you very much. Well, I want to start off by just naming, as Bill put it, the bittersweetness of the moment. And at the same time that we're celebrating our levy, we're also mourning the loss of some really significant cuts. So I'm going to talk about the levy and just acknowledge the work that was done on that and then speak directly to some of the cuts that we had to make. This is the first opportunity we've had to be together as a board and a community after the levy success. So I just want to thank all of our community for their support. I absolutely want to thank Evergreen citizens for schools and our staff for all the time that they spent. There's no way that this would have happened without them leaning in in the way they did. And we also, you know, I think we did a pretty good job of engaging our community. And we need to be committed to continuing that engagement at the high level. So I just want to commend and thank everybody for leaning into that and making that a success. It's, we did something extraordinary together. Our board, our teachers' union, our principals, our classified staff, our parents, and our community came together around a common purpose and went from 42% to almost 55% success. So I feel like we are, after this incredible feat, that we're well-positioned to move forward together in our strategic plan and some of the other work that we're doing. So that part excites me. I also want to speak to the enrollment loss, the reductions due to enrollment loss. We knew that it was, even if the levy passed, it was going to be a difficult moment to also reduce nearly $20 million to be able to get in line with what we need to do to operate our budget next year. One of the things that was mentioned up here is we need to make sure we leave no stone unturned about the budget situation. I'd like to speak to that a little bit. Right now, we're at a minimum 5% fund balance, which means we have just about one month's worth of bank account, basically, to do our payroll. We've had enrollment loss of 2,500 students over the last few years. And we've kept our staffing levels up. And I think that was a good thing during the pandemic, needing to keep social distancing, needing to keep class sizes small. We're at a point where we no longer have the resources to be able to continue to do that. We're budgeting tightly for next year even. There's not a lot of slack in our budgeting if our enrollment loss is significant. So we're not being ultra-conservative with our budget. There also is uncertainty related to enrollment for next year. And our ESAR funds are being used to support the leanness that you're seeing in some of these reductions right now. So I also just want to say that I'm personally sorry for the people in the programs affected by these cuts. These are gut-wrenching cuts that were made that impact individuals personally. And I just want to express I accept the responsibility for informing these decisions, these budgeting decisions. And I just want you to know that I don't and we don't, as a board and leadership, take those things lightly. We are, at the ASC, our budget reduction strategy included putting provisionals at the top of the reduction list. We did that across the board. We eliminated seven provisional positions at the ASC. One of the really important functions that we have in this district is our equity and inclusion work. And the result of reducing our provisional employees, the result of that was that three of our equity and inclusion specialists were lost to the cuts. So that is, that's, you know, it is, I would say, a setback for us in our equity work. And we're going to have to really work hard to keep that work moving forward by distributing our leadership around equity and making sure that all of us are doing that personal work, that journey work, and that work to be equity leaders in our roles. And we're also going to be committed to, through our strategic planning process, to keep that work alive and moving forward in the best way possible, given the challenge with the loss of our three equity specialists. We also made the difficult decision to eliminate the newcomer program. Two newcomer programs in our district. Our elementary newcomer program served 24 students. Our secondary one was currently serving 11 students. The significant costs associated with that. And we made that difficult decision to do that, that one. I was an ESL teacher for five years. I ran a newcomer center. So I'm not unaware of the needs of our newcomer students. And I am confident that we can provide the services and support to our immigrant and refugee students. And I will personally make sure that I am involved in ensuring that and I will ensure you that I will be personally involved with making sure that our equity work moves forward. The biggest reduction across the board was in classroom teachers. And so we lost 100 classroom teachers, 60 elementary, 22 middle, five high school, four alternative, and eight itinerant. The itinerant, folks, are those people that were doing music and PE at the elementary. Given the enrollment losses of the classrooms, those positions were reduced as well. We lost administrative staff, two teaching and learning executive directors, a CTE manager, a compliance manager. We lost 12 special education teachers and 34 quarantine monitors, classified staff, 20 EL paras, 17 special education paras, three ASC classified positions. That's folks that work here. And we also were able to find budget savings of about $800,000 in supplies and service contracts that the district had. We have really worked hard to get down to every nickel and dime to find all the resources to support what we can in our district. And so just once again, I wanted to name. I know that there's going to be some folks speaking about these various losses. I appreciate that, your input. I'm glad you're here, supporting your passion. And I just want to repeat the fact that I'm personally affected and personally sorry for your loss. And I just want to thank you.
All right. Thank you, John.
Open for a question?
Yeah.
You talked about the ASC cuts as being driven by, starting with provisional contracts, P1, P2, P3, I assume? And that the loss of our DEI specialists emerged from that rather than being a target of a cut?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Next is department updates. The first one is going to be teaching and learning update, and Rebecca's going to lead us through that.
I wound them up for you, Rebecca.
So do I just, I have not used my computer here before. I just unplug and plug in? Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Superintendent Boyd, it's my pleasure this evening to present a few teaching and learning updates for you. As you know, we have made some changes to our, I think I'm not mirroring. Do I drag?
There we go.
Thank you. So I'm here to talk a little bit about our school improvement plans. As you know, school improvement planning is the heart of our principal leadership, of the work of our classrooms. And so we've made a couple of changes this year in the way we're sharing those with you. We haven't made any changes to the actual plan this year. So you received a document that had our one-pagers on it, had a list of links to all of the one-pagers. I'm just going to walk you through one of those one-pagers. And that is Marion Elementary School. And I'll just take you through that one. And so what the principals have done for you, because as you know, the school improvement plans are meaty documents, all right? They have a lot of information in them. So they've chosen to highlight one high priority to mark goal. In this case, it was students in special education and our language learners moving to different levels of their phonics domain. And so you can read more about that. But then, as we go through, you can see, you know, their outcomes from the beginning of the year to the second. So this is their mid-year status update. They have that visually in another way. This is eye-ready data. And so you can see that they're moving their students from tier one to tier two, working on that. And the data of this one isn't so important as just the format of the way that they, as you go through all of these one-pagers, you'll be able to see the principals highlighting that. And then they're already thinking about their mid-year adjustments. A school improvement plan is not a static plan. It's not meant to sit on a shelf. We're meant to be looking at the data and thinking about how we can make adjustments now in our classrooms, in our school, in the professional development we're providing, and then looking toward the following year. Which takes me to our next thing that I want to talk about, which is our plan for next year. So next year, I believe that our, I, we are reading Fulan's right now, Coherents, as you know. So Fulan has this concept called "simplicity," which I love. And as I thought about simplicity in our school improvement planning, you take a difficult problem, identify a small number of key factors. That's the simple part, Fulan tells us. Then you make those factors gel under the reality of action with its pressure, politics, and personality. That's the complex part. So you get to simplicity. So at its surface, school improvement planning is pretty simple. But when you add all of the outside factors that you have to gel together, it gets very complicated. So some of the things, and we're starting to plan for next year already. We're really beginning to work on that. One of our key goals for next year is going to be very tight alignment to our strategic plan. We've had literally thousands of people come in on our strategic plan. It's such a robust document, and I'm just so thrilled to be a tiny part of that work here in the district. So vertical alignment, as we think about it, from the board to the classroom. So from that strategic plan to what is impacting kids and what kids or our students are experiencing in their classrooms. And then our, we're already beginning, people are out in buildings doing careful and extensive review of data as we're thinking about next year and planning for next year. So we have the Youth Truth, which is a very robust tool. We have Healthy Youth Survey. We have assessment data and other pieces which are going to really inform the work of those school improvement plans. We're hoping and targeting that SIPs will be completed earlier in the year or next year so that in November, our board will be receiving information about the plans. And those plans will be shared with you at that time. This week, John's going to be rolling out at our operations meeting information for the principals about backwards planning from that date. And then we'll have checkpoints in January, March, and June, where I anticipate the board will be getting a one-pager, similar to what you did today, checking in on that strategic plan for each one of the schools. We're also We're also going to plan to divide all of the schools up, because frankly, 38 is way too many SIP plans for any one, two, even four, if we had our school supervisors, as well as Ruth doing our check-ins. It's really too many. So we're going to distribute that leadership to many people at the ASC, so that each one of us would have maybe two or three schools to really partner with around this work. So that is how we anticipate that going next year. I look forward to having a chance to take a deep look at those one-pagers and addressing any questions you might have about those.
Could you go back to the one pager for Marion? It's a question about the colors.
A question about the colors?
Am I reading it correctly? I think it's on page one. The, the graphs of, that looks like MTSS, sort of. What does tier one mean? What does tier three mean on this graph?
It, it is essentially the same work as MTSS. So tier one are the students, you know, who are getting what they need to be at proficiency in our, you know, just through our regular curriculum, our regular instruction. Tier two needs some additional support, and then tier three need support beyond that.
And this is data from the last iReady, the fall? Okay.
Fall and winter, fall left, winter on the right. And then do keep in mind that these are our language learners and our special education students. So this doesn't, you know, they developed a goal specifically around closing gaps with those students and elevating those students' proficiency.
Understood. Does the graph, as we're looking at it now, resemble previous years? Or is it harder for kids?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, having not had a chance to look at the SIP data longitudinally, but I'd be happy to get back to you with an answer for that.
Appreciate it.
Can we go back to that other page that we were just, that we came from? I think when, those simple, those simple pieces, the simple part, I think as this rolls out, I'll be very curious as to what those key factors look like. I know it's very easy to point at test scores, but test scores are, as we know, that it's only a very small fraction of what really identifies what the issues are, and there's multiple things that come into play. And so I think it's really important for us to know what those key factors are, so that we can really understand what it is, because every school is unique, every student is unique. And so understanding it in a more comprehensive way, I think, will be helpful to us.
Yeah, and just so you know, Victoria, we are in the process of, now that we've completed the first part of the strategic planning process with our mission and vision, and some key actions and outcomes, and some beliefs, now it's time for us to put kind of the meat on the bones. And that means developing, you know, deciding on what those key metrics are, so that we can monitor those over time, build some routines around them, and so that our outcomes can improve, and we can have confidence that we can improve. And what I appreciate about what Rebecca has outlined here is, is both the, the support and accountability built in, the routines and the checkpoints, and then there'll also be an alignment to the strategic plan. And to use a very tired analogy, we're sort of building it as we're flying it, because we just completed the strategic plan. But we're really going to work hard over the next few months to, to help the principals build the alignment to the strategic plan through the school improvement planning process with some accountability, some checkpoints, and support.
Great. Thank you.
What strikes me about the list of data sources that you're, that you have up there is that, including Youth Truth and so forth, including iReady, it should be not impossible to find alignment with the operational expectations pieces for interpretation and indicators. And I believe you should advise us if, like Mike was doing a couple of years ago, if there's overlap or alignment, or a misalignment that would work better if we reworded it, but it'll have to be the board's work to reword it.
Right. And that's definitely a piece of the work, is figuring out how that intersects with board policy and the board work. So that's part of the, the meat on the bones that we're going to have to put on this thing. Happy to support it.
Well, I definitely appreciate the fact that we're going to have it earlier in the year, and then that we're going to have checkpoints throughout the year, so then we can keep monitoring it, and, you know, whatever the data is that we decide, you know, as a team, that we want to make sure that we're making significant improvements in, that we can see it throughout the school year.
I miss the winter conversations.
I'm sorry, the what?
I miss the SIP conversations that we had for so many years, and this looks like it could focus that as well.
I did want to find out, I know this will be fleshed out in our strategic plan, but right now, I worry about kids now. And are we going to be receiving some information regarding like our, like what our interventions are ongoing right now? We did summer, pretty extensive summer school last summer, you know? I'm not expecting you to have answers for that today, but I really would like to know what's going to happen with interventions for bringing kids back up to speed from when they were home, and, and the, the lag in, in their learning, so.
I think, I certainly think the Teaching and Learning Department would be honored to be able to share, maybe in a workshop, the work that's been done, certainly lots of it to support our students and our learners as we address, you know, the, the challenges of the pandemic and how we're working very hard to overcome that. So if we have time in a future workshop, we'd be honored and pleased to be able to showcase and shed light on that work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is our Equity and Inclusion Update. Clarissa Hightower is going to present for us this evening. Hi, Clarissa.
Good evening. I don't need that. Good evening, members of the board, community members. I'm going to give our update on our equity and inclusion work since we last met. I would be remiss, and it would be disingenuous of me not to mention a, a large part of the work that myself and Jamila have been doing over the past couple of weeks is making sure that our staff, and specifically talking about our staff that was affected by the cuts, and their colleagues keep their morale up. Namely because a lot of the work that we are engaging in as a transition into what equity work will look like on next year involves them having conversations about work that they won't be included in. And so it is, it is a time for us to be thinking about how we can make sure that there are supports and resources in place for schools in the absence of three of our equity advancement specialists. And the way we have been doing that is by focusing on three things. The first thing is relooking at our culturally responsive practices roadmap. The original version of that was a plan in which included the supports that we have now. And so we're looking at what that will look like in our schools as we proceed forward to make sure that our culturally responsive practices, the work that has been put in thus far, remains and continues to grow and expand, because as we know, our equity work is not separate from what happens in our classrooms. It is an enhancement, and it can be embedded and will be embedded in, in our content, so that our students can move from dependent learners to independent learners. We are also creating guidance around our schools' equity teams. Each of our schools have equity teams at their sites. We're making sure that they have on-demand resources and guidance for making sure that those teams have a guide for how to proceed throughout the rest of the year without the specialist guiding them. So they'd have a, a book, right? Or some Canvas modules to be able to help them do that. The third is finishing up the proposed metrics for the key performance indicators for our equity efforts moving forward. We do have quite a bit of data, some lagging, right? Some lagging indicators and some leading. And we have some suggestions for which of those we'd like to utilize in helping to monitor the work of our strategic plan, as well as what's happening in our buildings. Finally, even though, like I said, it has been a bit of work to make sure that we keep morale up, you all have, and I say you all, because these staff members are still with us, they are quite resilient, and they're still doing beautiful work. And one of those things is making sure our teachers have resources for the month of May, which is Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month. So we did, we were able to push out resources around that. I am going to share a little bit of information with you about our wonderful Asian American Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander community, as we celebrate their heritage this month. I'd like for the board and community to know that we have about 1,300 students and families represented in our Asian American community, including, but not limited to, our Vietnamese, Indian, Afghani, Korean, Japanese, and Chinese students and families. For our Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander community, we have about 600 students and families represented in our district, and they encompass a wide range of cultural groups, including, but not limited to as well, our Micronese, Apollonesia, Chukies, Native Hawaiians, Samoan, just to name a few. The way in which you will see some of our Asian American and Native Hawaiian communities celebrated in our schools is going to range. What I can share with you that has happened thus far, that will be happening pretty soon, at Ilahi Elementary, they had an off-school assembly with a performance from Portland Taiko, which is a Japanese drumming company. And the students really enjoyed experiencing the Japanese culture through music. At Cascade Middle School, the Pacific Islander Club has been making kukiyu, hope I said that right, kukiyu nut lays. And they are teaching each other how to introduce themselves in their respective Pacific Islander languages. And they'll be having a celebration at their school on Monday of next week. We also have some amazing Asian and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander staff who have dedicated their lives to serving our students and families. And what we're going to be doing is throughout the month, we'll be sharing some short videos of their narratives via video. And we encourage staff to share those narratives with students. And the, the, the goal behind that is to provide our students with multiple perspectives and bring us all closer in our humanity. And so I, I encourage everyone to join us, to celebrate Asian American, Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Month during the month of May. That is the extent of the equity update for this evening. Do you have any questions?
I don't know that I have a question, but I have a comment. Clarissa, you have really been a light in this work, and I am so impressed with what you guys have been able to do, and I'm broken over the change that has to come, because we're in conflict with our contracts and, and, you know, and we've lost student, you know, we've lost students, and I'm hoping they come back at some point. But I can assure you, and you and I've talked about this, this board stands behind our equity work 100%. This is not going to, we are not going to let it stall. We are going to keep moving forward, because, you know, as far as I'm concerned, there is no hate allowed in this district. And if we don't take a stand about it and, and stop the meanness, the unkind activities, the words that hurt, you know, all of those things, because equity is, encompasses every child in our district. And this equity work helps every child in our district. And I don't care what the political BS is, in our district, it's about everybody being treated with respect and kindness, so that every child comes in here and feels safe. So I want you to know that you still have our commitment, the commitment we've had. And this is a pretty big bump in the road, but the intention is there, and the, the truth about it is still going to be moved forward by this board. And I appreciate everything you've done, and I understand that this whole situation has been really hard on you, and I'm sorry.
It's a heartbreak for me, too. When we wrote our resolution two years ago, is it two years ago already? We meant it. We still mean it. My, since learning about this cut, my, my head has been kind of just thinking in the background about, now, how do we maintain this? And so I'm really looking forward to the plan that you're talking about, and hoping that the people that had to be let go are all right. It's, it's a heartbreak. It's, it's, let's, let's not pretend it isn't. Our district will miss them structurally and personally, and I'm sorry that, I'm sorry it happened this way. So I share that. And everything else that Victoria said was so eloquent and perfect that I can't rephrase it.
Yeah, I think the difficult thing is when you, when you really are building up a program and things are, you know, and we're headed in the right direction, and that it feels like, well, it is a step backwards, and, but, you know, we're going to come through it on the other side. And I appreciate that the work that you continue to do with your team during these hard times, because I know it's difficult. Jenny, or I think Jaclyn had to step away, but I think we're good.
I can't hear them.
I can hear you guys. It's just, it's really difficult to make comments this way, so I just thank you for everything that you guys have done. And I, I look forward to continuing the work that we're doing and, and, and moving forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Clarissa.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is informational item. We have some curriculum to take a look at this evening. These are all first readings. So the first one is Essential Health, ninth through 12th, and this is going to be presented by Kim Miller. Come on up, Kim.
Thank you for having me here this evening. Last time when I was here, there was a question on the board about using this curriculum on our online program, and so went back and looked at that. And our online credit recovery program is a very intense, very shortened program, that this could certainly be used as an alternate source or an enhancement. However, this is really, we're aiming for this to be our classroom book, to be our Spanish book in Spanish help, so, to answer that question. So, do you have other questions for me?
Does the board have any other questions since the last time, since we did this in a workshop?
This is the Goodheart Wilcox.
Yes, sir.
Book. I just want, I guess, reiterate the, the notice, this, this does not contain a comprehensive sex ed curriculum. We're addressing that elsewhere.
That is correct.
Just to affirm that as we go into it. Thank you.
I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
All right. Since this is informational item, we will entertain questions from the audience on, for this Essential Health, ninth through 12th. Yeah, maybe stay up here, Kim, in case there's any questions.
Sorry. Thank you.
Are you, you're presenting on the next three, two?
You're not.
Oh, you're not? Okay. All right. Seeing none. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that question for us, too. All right. Then next up is Crystal Wolf.
Julie, is this our first reading? We don't have to vote to?
Oh, these are first readings. Yeah, I suppose we should take a motion for Essential Health, ninth through 12th.
Make a, a motion to move Essential Health, ninth through 12, as presented to the second reading.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jenny?
Sorry, aye. Did you not hear me?
Yeah, thank, thank you. I think Jaclyn had to step away.
Yes.
Okay. So next up, AP Biology. We'll start with that. We've done this in a workshop. This is our first reading.
Yes. Yep. Thank you for having me. It's been a while since I've seen you, and a lot's happened since then, but AP Biology is a new textbook that we are looking at. We had Campbell. We had Campbell in the past, but teachers felt that this textbook really addressed the needs of all of our learners and would support students who may not think of themselves as AP-ready and being able to achieve AP Biology standards. Are there any questions about AP Biology?
I'm really happy to see this, and, you know, as we know, if a student takes even one AP class, their chances of graduating.
Yes, in fact, they don't even need to pass the test necessarily to gain that.
Unless just they do pass the test, that's an even bigger advantage. So I'm, I'm a big believer in AP. It's, it does show that there is, and, you know, there, I've been on the board long enough to see an evolution of AP, and years ago, we had a very small number of students that took AP classes. They were pretty much focused in one high school, and I got to give credit to Joan Skelton, who was a former colleague of mine on the board, and the push to bring one AP to every high school and to expand the offerings and to really encourage students to find that subject that they can embrace and move forward and, and have that experience, which we know is good. And now, I don't even know how many kids we've got in AP now, but it's a lot.
Yeah, and they're sitting for their exams this week, so, yeah.
And so I feel really good about the fact that we have kids taking these higher-level classes, passing that test, helping them with their future, whether it's going on to college or other endeavors. So I, I thank you for bringing us, you know, the new and improved textbook, and I, I just celebrate the fact that we've stayed committed all these years to just keep moving AP more and more out to as many kids as we possibly can. So thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Rob, any questions?
It's, it's more of a comment, thinking about how this offering and, and the idea of introducing an AP kind of pedagogy to students who don't think of themselves as college-bound, is that there is a law about, right now, about requiring that someone be automatically enrolled in certain subjects and might end up in an AP section without having, you know, cognited through whether or not they want that or their family wants that. AP classes come with some extra fees that are kind of soft, not from the schools, but an expectation to take the test, that we have limited opportunities, and an expectation to purchase supplemental materials on your own is on my mind. I am really glad that there's a broad array of opportunities to get college credit running start, college and the high school in the district just participating in them all, but it's that law that automatically enrolls that actually my son ran into and found himself changing classes after the fall began because of his interests. And he's doing fine. He's getting college credit through Cascadia, but as we get into that tracking, it'll be important for our counselors to know them and to help them with the scheduling. Otherwise, we end up in this automatic thing. So that's kind of tangential to the curriculum adoption, but it's the thing I've been thinking about for a long time about college track. Yeah.
One of the things, though, that I think is interesting, I think it's a misnomer to think that because somebody takes an AP class that they're automatically going to go to college, because having those higher level, that higher level knowledge and depending on the subject matter, anybody can benefit from. I mean, so I, I always tell a student who's asked me if I, should I take AP or, take what interests you and go at it the highest level you possibly can because your interest is going to guide you through that and, and help you be successful. And so helping kids understand what their likes and dislikes are. I agree with you, Rob, having real good knowledge of who our kids are. It makes me excited for kids to be able to have access to these classes, no matter what their future holds. Right now, I could fall back on my biology because I have a robin nesting in my window with babies and lots of questions.
All right. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? Since this is a first reading, we'll entertain questions from the audience on AP Biology. All right, seeing none, then we will go ahead and move, oh, we're going to need to take a vote to move it to a second reading.
Oh, I move to advances to a second reading.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jenny. Okay. All right, so next we'll go on to AP Physics, one and two, Algebra-Based.
Yes, so in Board Workshop, I expressed the need for a new textbook here that serves both of our AP Physics courses, one which is Algebra-Based and one which is Calculus-Based, and so that is really what the review team was looking at. And so this, this first one here is AP Physics, one and two, two separate courses. More students take AP Physics, one than AP Physics, two, and then the book there is by Knight. I think, Rob, you had a question last time about the Pearson Plus app, which is an app that students can download on their personal devices. Should they choose to read offline?
Yeah, I wondered if, I wondered if they were going to be marketed to.
Yeah, so there's no additional cost to it, and as far as I can tell, we need to dig into it further, but the marketing isn't there. It's something that is in the K-12 bucket, and so there's some really specific parameters around what's allowable in that bucket because they understand that it is schoolchildren there. And so you asked about the additional costs. There's definitely included in our digital license, and then the marketing is, is not targeted to them. It would meet our, our qualifications for.
So me going in as a citizen or as some random person to Pearson looking at this sees a different thing than someone going in through Canvas? With a student login?
Ask it one more time.
If you have a student login, you don't see the ads?
Right, so there's a student login, and it's that, it's a different platform than the marketing platform that you would have seen from the public side of the webpage. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it does.
I just got to watch out for that.
Yep.
It's like when you pay for an app, right? And you don't have to have the ads. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the audience for AP Physics, one and two, Algebra-Based? Yes, sir. Could you come up to the podium so we can hear you?
Just be, my name is Don Stanky. I'm a retired physics teacher, taught AP Physics, and just caution you, on all these specialty classes, what if only 18 people sign up? And your building is staffed at so many students per teacher? And so if there's only 18 in this class and only 18 in that other type of specialty class and only 18 in that other one, that means some other teacher has to have 35 and 40, and that, that happened at Forbes a lot, and I just want to caution you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Nice to see you, Don.
Yeah, I know our building principals do really work hard on staffing to make sure that we can offer as many courses as possible, but it, it does get tricky.
Okay. If there's no other questions or comments, then we will entertain a motion to a second reading.
Move we advance this curriculum to the second reading.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so then we'll move on to, it sounds even harder, AP. It is harder, AP Physics with Calculus.
It is.
Probably not classes, I, I must be honest, I would probably not enroll in these.
Yeah, so this, this book is going to be with the math level at a calculus level, and it is by the same author, but again, the, the concepts match the AP course description for AP Physics with Calculus.
All right, any questions or comments from the board?
This is the one we got to look at last time.
Yeah. Yeah, I think there's copies of all the books, too, on the table.
Really liked the presentation in the book and the way that the data was organized or the, the information. It's always good to see a good textbook.
It is amazing to me how many, that we do have a number of kids that work at this level. It's exciting, and I'm glad that we can offer that so that no child doesn't get their needs met and they can move forward as, you know, no limits. That makes me feel good.
Absolutely.
I, I will maintain a stance that calculus makes physics easier and physics makes calculus worthwhile. So anybody interested in how stuff moves and studying that in order to be an engineer or a scientist, the two go together. I'm pleased to see that we're offering a course for that.
Thanks, Rob.
Geeking out a little bit, yeah.
Only one of us has gotten, knows what it says.
I was going to say, I'm going to take your word for that one. All right. Okay, so questions from the audience for AP Physics with Calculus? All right, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I move that we advance AP Physics with Calculus to a second reading.
Second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, great. And then the next one is Inclusive Comprehensive Sexual Health Education. Are you doing this one as well, Crystal?
I've got all the things tonight. Yep.
All right.
It's my big night.
Thanks for hanging with us.
Yeah, so in Board Workshop, what we talked about was, you know, we have our flash curriculum, and we have that in the elementary and the middle school, and when we initially adopted the curriculum, we selected a certain selection of lessons, and now looking at our equity policy, it makes sense to make sure that we have all of those lessons accessible to teachers in the elementary and middle school curriculum. Again, as you referenced earlier, high school has adopted the flash curriculum as a supplemental resource to cover comprehensive sexual health at the high school level. Also, OSPI has come out with a great resource for implementation, and so utilizing that as a framework as we just really make sure that our sexual health is inclusive and it is comprehensive and it meets the needs of each of our students.
You know, one of the things that I have always appreciated, and it's been this way in our district forever and will continue to be that way, I assume, is that any, because this can be a touchy subject, as we know, but the curriculum is always open to review by parents.
Absolutely.
And a parent always has the option to take, to opt out for their student. So I like that it has that parent choice piece. I also like that it is inclusive because we have a lot of different families and a lot of different kids, and, and so they need to see themselves in this curriculum. And I also feel confident in this, in the data that tells us that when you have a comprehensive plan for sexual health, that the chance of a student making choices that might endanger them and, and have bad consequences is lowered, and that we also help our kids know what are boundaries. I really like that piece throughout the curriculum about, and it's all, you know, and it being age-appropriate is the, the idea that, you know, no is no. If somebody does something that's not appropriate, then, you know, teaching students how to identify that and to tell someone they trust. I like the frank discussions about consequences to our actions, and I like it that there's a wide variety of options for kids to be thinking about because not, not everything works for every person. And so, but again, I really like that parental piece that I think is important to our families.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's the, if I may, the necessity, given the sensitivity of the subjects that we're adding to many families, that we should be as open and as clear in that curriculum examination. Some of the, some of the curriculum, especially in the first few grades, isn't it true that the first few grades is on the website for people to look at?
Yeah, so we have a public-facing website that kind of outlines what all of the topics are, what the lessons are, so that parents can see that at any time, and then, of course, they also have family engagement nights as well.
And then some of the curriculum has a copyright restriction that prevents you from republishing it.
Correct, so the elementary lessons are freely available from the King County website, and then middle school and high school is behind a paywall, but we do make those accessible to parents here.
What do parents need to do today if they want to examine this?
Yeah, so they would just contact the Curriculum Instruction Secretary, Lori Davis, and she can set up a time either to meet with me personally or for them to come and preview the material.
Through my appointment?
At this point, yes. We had a, a family engagement night in March, and we always have one in the fall as well. So we're past that March date, but happy to loop parents in who might have missed it.
Appreciate hearing that. I think, given, I don't remember the bill number, but the CSC law that was worked on and the, the attention that the legislature put into parent notification and parent opt-out is going to, the possibility is going to arise that parents will agree with some of the curriculum but not agree with other parts, and as difficult as that sounds, it would be, I think it would be of comfort to the community as a whole if parents could see the order of the subjects and be able to opt out of pieces. I don't know if that's.
That is part of our opt-out form, yes. So it's lesson by lesson, yep.
Okay, so if it's lesson by lesson, and we're clear about how to explain that and, and kind about inviting parents who have those concerns, I think we can proceed.
All right, thanks, Rob. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the audience? Yes, sir, come on up.
Thank you, Gary Wilson. I'm glad this came up tonight because I just emailed Crystal today. I know back last year, I talked to the board about a, another comprehensive sex ed curriculum called Check the Facts, and it's down in California, you know, mainly. There's 31 school districts down there where it's being used, and it's a more factual and family-friendly curriculum than the current Planned Parenthood flash curriculum. And you mentioned, you know, you've lost 4,000 students, and I know part of that is attributable to ESSB 5395, the state mandating comprehensive sex ed. I know parents are just like, you know, going to take my kids out at this point. I think this would be a good compromise to look at this curriculum. I have a, a portion of it, a sample, and I also have a video from the writer, and yeah, I think you guys would do well to consider looking at this curriculum. I know I brought it up, like I said, last year, and you put me in touch with Ryan, the Chair of the Instructional Committee, and in talking with him, he said, well, you know, we look at it about every seven years, and it sounded like you weren't going to look at it for a while, but then a few weeks ago, in one of your, your previous session on this, you mentioned that it was brought in in 2016, so seven years, that's 2023, so this would probably be the year you could look at other curriculum and consider, you know, maybe this would be a, a good choice for parents in your district to, they could get more behind rather than, you know, because frankly, a lot of parents are going to have issues with it. I know I did. I went, I went to view the curriculum, it was like two years ago. I've still got a, a daughter, she's in fifth grade now, but I viewed the curriculum, and yeah, I had trouble first half getting an appointment. It was like October 15th, and I was busy that night, and the next time I could view it was March 15th, so it was like two nights in the entire year, at least that's the way it was two years ago. But I did view it, and I did have some concerns. I've got a page right here that's actually from it, so anyway, just if you'd consider and if you'd love to set up a meeting, I can bring the sample I have and have you review it and review the video, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Follow-up question for you, Gary. OSPI has a formal review process of curriculum. Are they evaluated against their parameters? Do you know if Check the Facts has been reviewed by OSPI?
You know, I don't, I can contact the writer. I know Battleground was looking at it, and, you know, I think, I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
But I know the, you can, it does, there is an opening for school boards to select their own.
There is, yes. But I was wondering if it has met the state criteria, if OSPI has taken a look at it, that would be interesting to have. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal.
It is, that curriculum wasn't brought. It is, that curriculum wasn't brought to your attention during this development process, was it?
I got an email from him, I think like 4:30 this afternoon, so.
This afternoon, but we're here at first reading and so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And again, we didn't really go through a full adoption cycle, more just an analysis of the new law with what we currently had and looking for the holes there. So, we haven't gone through a cycle of, do we want something completely new and different?
All right, other, was there other questions from the audience? Yes, sir.
Mr. Phil Cronwitz. Do the parents know that a corporation planned parent is behind the flash curriculum?
It's not, it's King County.
It's King County? They, King County made this curriculum? Okay, all right, okay. It's not involved with any corporation?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question.
The flash curriculum?
Just to repeat the answer that I had there, flash was created by King County in support of Seattle Public Schools and it's a public health initiative that originally created the curriculum.
So, it's King County Public Health?
Thank you. All right, so if there is no other questions, then the, we'll entertain a motion to move this to a second reading.
I move that we advance the proposed additions and changes to the sexual health education curriculum to a second reading.
Second.
Moving second, and all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much, Crystal. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is comments by the school board.
I did.
I just have one. I guess I can go real fast, but next.
It'll take me a minute to.
Next Tuesday is the Washington State School Directors Association Regional Meeting. It looks like Lori got us all signed up. So, it's kind of excited for it because it'll be my first one in person that I get to lead for Region Six.
We're looking forward to it.
Thank you for all signing up and joining me.
I was able to attend the, I guess it's the South Side Choral Festival with the elementary kids and the whole thing and I got the opportunity to speak about the quality of music education and a little bit in terms of the levy and the richness of the programs there. I really enjoyed the performances that were given there. It's come such a long way since I was involved in the music programs and really warmed my heart to hear the children sing and to be back in those concert venues doing that. I also had an opportunity on a spur of the moment to attend Shaheila Middle School's drama performance of Winnie the Pooh. Sixth through eighth graders performing two of A.A. Milne's stories. It was delightfully peaceful and the care and attention that the teachers there put into helping those kids perform really showed. They really shined. I had the Legislative Committee meeting and there were a couple of positions that, if we're getting, if we have that on our workshop, that I could present to you just for first impressions, so that I'm carrying the right advocacy for our director area. And I'm looking forward to Kelso. A lot of the same reasons as the choir concerts. I think so.
Okay. I did the one, the choir concert over at, that was at Evergreen. And I took my mom, who just turned 84. She loved it. And it was so exciting to see the kids. They were so happy, engaged, in awe, the youngers were in awe of the elders and how they're so good and, but they were so into it and that's what we're, you know, school should be exciting and fun and having all the families represented there, supporting their students. It was, it was happy. It reminded me of the old days before COVID. So, yeah, that was super fun. And I know Rob and I are gonna be attending the culture parade, which we've done for years and years, so it's gonna, we're back. We're gonna be doing that and it'll be your first time, John. It's super fun. I'm really looking forward to seeing all these students who are representing their heritage. And we'll see countries represented from all over the world and it'll be super fun. I'm, it's always one of my favorite activities to do every year, so I've missed it a lot. I personally want to thank everyone that came together for the levy. I'm gonna also take some responsibility for the fact that the first round didn't go the way we wanted. Distractions did not have us keeping our eye on the ball about what kind of effort needed to go out. But everybody came together, as John was saying, you know, we had staff, we had community. It really did represent our, our community. It's always sad when we don't get as many people who, you know, voting, but it's that way in every election, so. But it was surprising to me how many people, when we were out door belling, said, "I didn't even know about the first one." So, there was a lot of people that are supportive of schools that just didn't know there was an election, so. So, it was encouraging and it was a turnaround and it really was amazing, the work that was done and the effort that was made and the, just the change, because I don't think it, people, you've been hearing about it from all over the state. You don't usually see turnarounds like that in a school election. So, it tells you that this community really does support our schools. I've already talked about the heartache over the things, the staff cuts and the equity work. And I think that's pretty much everything that I want to talk about at this point. I've already kind of covered my.
I could interject because I got the numbers from the Secretary of States thing and was able to correlate that with the list of voters that I purchased as part of the campaign, just out of my own funds. We gained 5,158 voters, by my count, which is a comparison to the voter lists from February. That's immense. And the change in yes votes versus no votes was larger than 5158, so. Think, yeah, everybody should pat themselves on the back. I'm so grateful for the efforts that people made to get the word out.
Yeah, great, thanks. Jenny, did you want to add anything?
No, I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. All right, so then we will go ahead and move on to future agenda items. Does the board have anything they want to add? I think we got an idea earlier when we were getting a teaching and learning update to do a workshop around some of the things we're trying to do for, to get our kids back on track.
I also would like, I can't remember if I brought this up before, but if I did, I apologize. I really would like to get us back into some of the things that we used to do as it pertains to meeting with other groups, like we used to meet every year with the city council. We have some real discussions that need to be had about the East Side and our kids and so, and I'll be happy to spearhead that if you want. And just other groups that, what they do impacts what we do and vice versa, so. And then John can meet all the fun people. But that would be something I'd like to see us kind of get back on the schedule now that we have nothing to do.
I, I agree. I'm thinking about as well, just notification each month of every arts performance. Used to be standard practice. COVID took us, took it away from us for so long. And if it's not an addition of an overwhelming workload, just knowing when the choir band, orchestra, drama performances are kind of in a month list would be really helpful. I like going to the student shows and celebrating what they have to do.
I love those plays, oh my gosh.
Okay, is it Mount View or Union that's doing Newsies?
I don't know.
One of them's doing Newsies. They're doing a musical this.
That'll be fun.
It's just great.
All right, so did we get all that for the?
I think so.
Okay. All right, so next on the agenda is citizen comments. Any citizens wishing to address the board about an item not on the meeting's agenda may do so during the designated time on the agenda for citizen comments, as long as the comments are not personnel-related or about an individual employee or student and are not legal in nature. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Comments are to be directed to the board of directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. If there's more than one speaker on the same topic, the board president may set a specific time limit on how much testimony the board will hear on that particular topic. So, this evening, we have three folks that signed up virtually, and so we're gonna hear from them first. Okay, so Jasmine is not going to speak this evening. Okay, so then we move to Essence Brown Epperali. Is Essence?
She's not on yet.
She's not on there yet?
No.
Okay. Is it Zanaya Briggs? Did I say that correctly? And I'm gonna apologize in advance if I say anybody's name incorrectly. Okay, well, maybe they'll get back on and we can circle back if they do join us. So, we have several folks in the audience in person that would like to speak tonight. The first one is Shannon Shamba. Is that right? I got it. All right, come on up, Shannon.
Good evening, board. I'm Shannon Shamba. This is my 19th year in EPS. I've been happy here my whole career. And I'm currently an Equity Advancement Specialist. The last time I attended the school board in person was September 28th, 2021, and at that meeting, our newly-formed Equity Department listened to Executive Director Clarissa Hightower present a vision of equity and culturally responsive instruction so powerful that it brought me to tears and the room to a standing ovation. In fact, some community members who had come to speak against our equity focus complimented Clarissa on her presentation and chose not to make their comments. She changed their minds. My team felt an overwhelming sense of pride to be doing this important work alongside her. We were taking steps forward for our most vulnerable students and for the first time, I allowed myself to really believe that the district was committed to making progress towards racial equity. Unfortunately, I'm speaking tonight because despite concerning data showing racial inequities in EPS and all of Clarissa's hard work, three-fourths of our Equity Specialists have been cut, two of whom are people of color. As a white woman in this position, it's unacceptable for me to be benefiting again from a system that's disadvantaging my colleagues of color. Our department requires the multiple perspectives and talents of my teammates to effectively serve 38 schools. Racial equity wasn't mentioned during my first 17 years in the district. Five years ago, when I asked about the existence of a racial achievement gap, I was told, "We don't have that problem because we're not an urban school district." The recent Equity Audit revealed that we did indeed have a concerning achievement gap. In addition, nearly half of EPS students are students of color and more than 90% of their teachers and administrators are white. The Equity Audit's first 33 pages are dedicated to hiring and retaining staff of color and the Affirmative Action Plan set a goal to increase workforce diversity by 2% to 4% by 2025. How does reducing staff of color help us reach that goal? Institutional racism is defined as the policies, practices, and programs that intentionally or unintentionally perpetuate dominant white racial presence, positioning, and power. Systemic racism will continue unless it's actively interrupted. In total, six TOCs were cut from the district office, five of them serve our most vulnerable students. Cutting these crucial positions is protecting the status quo and perpetuating systemic racism in EPS. Without people who are dedicated to centering equity, how will we ever shift our system? In June 2020, the board adopted Resolution 6365, committing to dismantle systemic racism in our schools. With the time limit that I have left, I guess I have a couple of questions. I believe that we have a moral obligation to do something when we see something is not right. Whose decision was it to cut our department down to one white lady? And was the equity lens applied in that decision? How was it applied? What message does this send to our staff and our community? How was this action in alignment with your written values and beliefs about equity? Members of the board, will you choose to do what's necessary to build an equitable system where all students succeed? If so, please find a way to resource my department with skilled Equity Specialists or consider removing the promises from your board policies because words are meaningless without actions.
Thank you, Shannon. All right. Next up. Next up is Lisa McKee. Lisa McKee, are you in the audience this evening? Is she online? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to Vanessa Lawrence and her daughter Michaela. Are you here this evening? Oh, good, come on up. Hi there, how are you?
Hi, I'm Vanessa and Vanessa Lawrence and I'm a volunteer mother at Covington Middle School. And I'm over at the Black Student Union there. And I work alongside with Charlotte Latte, the Equity Events Specialty. And this is my daughter, Michaela.
Hold on one second, is her microphone on? Okay, I want to make sure we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Did you want me to start over?
It's okay.
It's okay.
Yes.
It's okay to continue from.
Okay. This is my daughter, Michaela.
Hi, Michaela.
My name is Michaela Lawrence. Please save the Black Student Union. It's a safe place for me to go to and talk about the negative interactions I face at school. If you cut the Black Student Union, you are sending a powerful message that you don't care and we, the students, don't matter. Please save the Black Student Union and show us you care and we matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you, Michaela.
All right, next, next up is Kyle Helm. Hi, Kyle.
All right, I taught kindergarten today and I'm not a kindergarten teacher, so forgive me if I stumble over my words. Members of the Board of Directors, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Kyle, instructional coach at Burton Elementary, affinity group co-facilitator, and EEA member. I'm here to share my perspective on proposed cuts resulting from decreased enrollment. We constitute our work, including the process of cutting staff and the values inherent in a just education system, which, in Evergreen's mission, centers on improving the educational experience for students, staff, and community members with unearned disadvantage and decreasing systemic harm. Systems are made up of and depend on people. Therefore, our EPS system can only become the place of educational empowerment and aspirational attainment outlined in our strategic plan and vision with people who believe in this future and have the power to make it so. That's why our teachers on special assignment, several of whom will be cut, are so important. In schools, TOCs guide the work of educating children. This year, Burton's Equity Committee embarked on an investigation with weekly support from an Equity Advancement Specialist to identify, explain, and solve predictability and outcomes for economically disadvantaged students. Members of the team shared that this experience shifted their practices. TOCs are a gateway to supporting, affirming, and growing every student. TOCs uplift the voices of students, staff, and community members too. With guidance from an Equity Advancement Specialist, LGBTQ+ affinity group members surfaced barriers to safety, existing authentically, and longevity. We also provided resources to our members and shared their feedback with this board. TOCs are a through line for marginalized voices to be heard and fostering safe, caring, and welcoming environments. At the district level, TOCs create systemic change for traditionally underserved children. This year, the Excel TOSA formed a multidisciplinary team that reviewed how we identify potential and determine eligibility for highly-capable services. This work allowed Burton to offer these services to multilingual learners who were in the past denied. TOCs are uniquely positioned to initiate and sustain system-wide change. This work requires all our TOCs. This work requires all our TOCs, and it benefits from their diversity. By accepting these cuts, we accept losing the perspectives, knowledge, and experience of staff of color, queer staff, women's staff, and staff with specialized expertise. We accept losing the very people we need to achieve an EPS where all students can pursue without barriers academic and social emotional excellence so that they can create the future they envision for themselves. We can choose a different path so that the vision becomes our reality by reviewing and revising the proposed cuts. Retain our TOCs. Thank you for your time today and for your service to this community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Shannon, do you know if we have that speaker's written speech in written form? Does he send it to us? Okay, it'd be nice to have that in written form.
All right, next up is Adam Aguilera. Hi, Adam.
Hello. Good evening, School Board. My name is Adam Aguilera. I'm a middle school teacher here in the school district. I want to thank the School Board for passing equity policies and investing in this school year when it comes to staffing, equity, and quarantine monitors. And I would like to address what we're looking at for next year in the proposed cuts, following with the staffing cuts of over 100 educators, which is not okay. These are the very same folks that we asked to door knock, phone bank, and vote for this replacement levy, and now this school district is telling them that they no longer have a job. These are the same folks who keep our class sizes smaller to provide one-on-one teaching to students and to keep community spread of COVID lower when there are less students in these crowded classrooms. There's no pipeline waiting to replace these educators. When we do that last-minute hiring every year at the start of the school year, as a member of the Professional Educator Standards Board, I recognize that there is an educator shortage across Washington State. We need to keep these folks that we have now, who are experienced already with our students and our schools, and are still willing to do this tough job next year. And in specifics to our cuts to our Equity Specialists, cutting the DEI department-certificated staffing by 75% is the embodiment of inequity and against Board policies on equity. What other department is being cut by that percentage? I need my Equity Specialist who services our middle schools. She has observed my classrooms to provide instructional support this year. She's provided me Community Circle curriculum for mass mandate changes, and she attends the district affinity groups that I co-facilitate. The remaining Equity Specialists will not have the capacity to provide my students and myself that individualized attention, and I thought she spoke very eloquently tonight to that. I find it disrespectful to Clarissa Hightower and Jamila Singleton to take away their team after only one year of investment. How will we continue to attract and retain highly qualified educators of color like them and the ones being rift when the district shows the public they are backsliding on their commitment to equity? I want to express concern to the community that Vancouver children who live on the east side will only have one Equity Specialist next year when the Vancouver School District has invested in 10. That is not equitable. And when it comes to our quarantine monitors being cut, that is overwhelming to our Dean of Students and our security staff who are overwhelmed with testing quarantine and contact tracing students before they were hired. We need them to continue because right now, we're seeing skyrocketing cases in our schools amongst students and staff, and this pandemic comes in waves throughout the school year, and we need to make sure that we have the appropriate staffing on all levels to keep our students and staff safe during the school year.
Thank you, Adam. All right, next is Christine Chambers. Hi, Christine, how are you?
I, too, will be speaking on the Equity Advancement Specialist and particularly the Black Student Union program. And I just want to speak from a personal note on some points. I've done some research and I've done some studying on the suicidal rates in our African-American students, and I found out that between the ages of 5 and 11, that the African-American students are leading in suicide rates, in females. And then in ages from 15 to 24, in the last year, for black males, it has spiked 50%. And that is to show that there is a need. There is a need for them to have mental health help. There is a need in the education system for them to have supporters and people to advocate for them. Because if they don't have them, when they spend almost eight to 10 hours at school, who do they have? Their parents are at work, they're at school with the teachers and the students, and so how are they getting the support that they need when the support is being taken from up under them? That is not fair to our students. That is not fair to the parents who are allowing the students to go to the schools and to put their lives in your hands, the educators. And to say that you're going to pull that rug from up under them when you have given them the opportunity to say, hey, we're going to help you, we're going to be on your team, we're going to support you, and then to say a year later, we're going to rip that rug from up under you and say, you know what, we're not going to help you anymore? That your trauma, that what you go through does not matter? That is cruel, and yet that should be inhumane as a human being to not get the support that you need as a child. As an adult, it's hard to deal with racial issues and to get up every day and fight to live, but we're expecting children to do that who are not even mentally developed enough to even understand that? So I hope that this message from everybody in here who has spoke has really pricked your hearts, and I hope that you really understand the fight that we are doing in this community, and I hope that you stand behind us and stand with us and not against us. Thank you.
All right, next to speak this evening is Kesa Brown. Is it Kesa? Is that right? No?
Casey.
Casey. Asia. Okay. Come on up.
I can blame my mom for that. My daughter's here for moral support. I'm Casey Brown, and I'm a teacher in Evergreen and a parent. And I am here to speak to the continued lack of support for staff and the misguided use of funds by those in leadership positions. Evergreen staff rallied and got the second levy passed, but with enrollment declines, we are still facing huge staffing cuts. Once again, Evergreen leadership is excluding their staff from discussions about how to solve the problems. Instead of learning from the past, especially the last two years, our leaders continue to focus on the only solution they seem to know: cut staff and pile the work onto the ones who are left, knowing full well that the work cannot and will not get done. I have personally asked to reduce my contract. My first request was in August of 2021. I was denied, with the stated reason being that I missed the March deadline, a ridiculous explanation at best, considering the global situation. And I was forced into a process of using the authority of the medical profession to speak for me and my needs. I applied for another reduction in FTE this spring and was again denied, again being told that my own voice was not enough, that only if a doctor could give me medical reason, that I could reduce my workload. I do not need a doctor to tell me that it is better for my health to have the time to take care of myself and my children. I do not need a doctor to tell me that it is better for my health to share the burden of trauma that is overwhelming our children after the past two years with another qualified professional. I do not need a doctor to tell me that self-care is essential when providing care for others. I am a veteran teacher. I know these things. I know that job sharing is an equity issue, and we are planning to gut our Equity Department. I know that we have paid out over a half a million dollars to simply be done with former super-- two different former superintendents. And I know that this time, my request for FTE reduction was denied because the district doesn't want to pay for benefits for two employees for one job. So my question to the Board is twofold, and is this: how many jobs could be saved if the district offered job sharing? And what do you actually value? Your staff, students, and their well-being, or the bottom line? Thank you for listening.
Thank you. All right, next up is Charlotte Larty. Hi, Charlotte.
Charlotte Latte. I'm one of the Equity Specialists that has been cut. This is about as racist as it gets. I think like what we're all feeling in this room is terrible, and no one's saying it. So I'm going to say it: this is racist. We have the policies, we have affirmative action plans. We've been moving on this path. You've hired black women and put them in charge of creating a plan. And there's just no excuse. We don't support schools, classrooms, we support the entire district, the school improvement plans. I'm not sure that y'all even know what a school improvement plan is. Every school has one, every school's working on an equity priority goal, and we provide direct support. So I think there's, you know, not only is this racist, there's a misunderstanding about what we do and the impact that we have on this community, and that's a problem we can fix. I think it's really important that when you put policies in place, you have a budget that is aligned to them, and we could all agree that like words don't change behavior. People change people's behavior. We could have all the policies in the world, and that's not going to change our systems. I've walked into a middle school and ran into a grandmother coming out with her grandson who had been attacked and told to change the color of his skin. He was bleeding through his bandages, and Jamila and I just looked at this boy, and had to tell him that we were sorry, that we knew he didn't deserve this, that he was just trying to go to school, that this was wrong, and this was after weeks of escalated, targeted racism that resulted in a physical attack that will leave scars. So not only is this just like so terrible, but it's also making Evergreen Public Schools a liability. If you do not invest in the people that are going to work with the adults to change the culture of the climate, it's not going to happen. This district is one N-word away from getting sued. Kids in Chemist are called monkeys. The N-word, kids in Evergreen are called monkeys, too. I've heard the N-word from schools in Evergreen more than I have ever heard in my life. I'm an adult. And like, I don't work in the schools directly, I just support students in the schools, and I have to hear that, and I keep coming to work because we're in this work together. But like, how dare you suggest, from the association, to find, overturn the rocks? I don't, I appreciate that rhetoric. I don't appreciate the Board. Are you sure these cuts were not targeted? They were necessary? I don't appreciate that. Don't appreciate the superintendent saying that this is gut-wrenching. So we've got three white men talking about how terrible this decision is. That's racist, and I'm just going to say it out there. It's your responsibility to raise your level of consciousness so that it doesn't, this doesn't have to be brought to your attention in such a public way, but at the same time, maybe that's necessary. So I did receive my non-renewal. I do not accept it, but I will accept invitation to restore the harm it has caused me because I'm willing to forgive this and recognize that this is a mistake, that we have to be partners, that I have assets to bring, and I expect you to see that and to honor that. In history, segregation started in 1954. Where do you think the black teachers went? They didn't just abandon their students, they were pushed out. I have been pushed out of three different school districts. I will not allow you to push me out of Evergreen because I'm invested to this community, and this needs to be restored. This was harmful. Our renewals were harmful. Bring in the NAACP, bring in LULAC, bring in PICA, bring in the Attorney General, because Evergreen's got a problem, and this needs to be fixed. We all need to be invested in healing this community and moving this work forward, and I appreciate it. I'm off to DC. I'm also an NEA State Director, one of six in Washington State. I am lobbying in DC. I have a meeting with Candy Herrera Butler, who is our representative, to advocate for equity, so you're welcome.
All right, our next speaker is Clarissa. Clarissa? Clarissa, are you here with us? Oh, there you are.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for me to speak on behalf of the Equity Department. My name is Clarissa Clarissi, and I am one of the three Equity Specialists that is being cut. Back in February, I coached and supported one of our instructional coaches in gathering student experiences at a school here in Evergreen. We asked students to share their experience about a time in school when they felt unsafe and disrespected. This information was then presented to staff as a tool for self-reflection and growth during a school-wide PD. I would like to share with you a few of the responses from our students of color here in our district. These experiences are difficult to hear and may be triggering for some folks because they contain racist and derogatory language and behavior. I was a freshman in class, and another student didn't want to participate and refused to dress down, and the teacher called him the N-word. "How does that make you feel?" the student was asked. "It makes me feel uncomfortable, and I didn't think a teacher would say something like that." "Can you tell me a little bit more about how that affected you emotionally and how you felt after that in the classroom?" I felt humiliated. I was one of the only black students in that class. Here's another story that was collected. There's a problem with racism and homophobia in the school. Like, two days ago, I was in the cafeteria during lunch, and there was a group of kids. They looked like upperclassmen, and they were making fun of Hispanics and Mexicans, and they pointed at me and my friend group because we are all Hispanic. And they said something about going back to Mexico and how we're all border hoppers and all of that, and that happens like a lot, actually, like almost weekly. There's a group of these boys, and they always say something racist, and it is online, too. They do it online. "How does that make you feel?" "It's unsafe." It's an unsafe feeling because, you know, I grew up like learning how some people are really mean to you because of your skin color, and hearing on the news what happens to people of color is really scary, to be honest, because I've gotten threatened before by one of those upperclassmen, and ever since, I don't feel safe here, and it's a scary feeling. These are not the only stories in our district. Many students reported similar experiences, unfortunately. As adults in this system that are working to support our students, our most vulnerable and marginalized populations, we need to do better. We have to do better. We have an obligation to do better. When presented with the student experiences, we ask staff to reflect on what their hopes are moving forward. In their feedback, here are some of the direct quotes that we heard. "I hope more of our PD time is dedicated to listening to students." "I want to create a unit on systemic racism in media." "I want to learn more strategies to support all of my students." "I will check in more with..." I will check in more with students to see how they are feeling. I'll learn more about microaggressions and how those affect students. This is how change is made, this right here. We transform our systems to meet the needs of the students. We create the opportunities to listen deeply, and then we use that information to reflect on our practice in service of students. Because we don't know what we cannot see, we must first listen. Each of us on the district equity team is supporting this type of transformative work in all school levels. That's our jobs. We support our schools in identifying systemic barriers, root causes, and inequitable practices in service of our students. In making such drastic cuts to our department, I'm deeply concerned about the loss this will mean for our most vulnerable populations. I call on the board to demonstrate their commitment to equity by reconsidering this decision. Thank you for your time. Good evening."
Thank you, Carissa. All right, our next, our next speaker is Bailey Cunningham.
Hi, so we have three student speakers today. Is it okay if we have three minutes each, or do we have to fit all three into the...
I think as you just lined up as one, it'll be three minutes total.
Okay. Hi, I'm Bailey Cunningham, and I'm the president and founder of Henrietta Lacks Health and Bioscience High School Environmental Club. We are here to advocate for fossil fuel emission reductions within our Evergreen School District facilities and the transportation department. Our goal is to make Evergreen the second school district in Washington State to commit to carbon neutrality by the year 2040 by transitioning to electric buses, fossil fuel-free heat pumps and systems, and fully electric appliances. In 2019, the United States Secretary General stated that we have less than 11 years before climate change becomes irreversible. In 2022, that means we have less than eight years to drastically reduce our fossil fuel emissions, to restructure the way our world operates, from transportation to production to education. Eight years to restructure our mindsets, for politicians and educational leaders to put our planet and the health of future generations over personal gain and tradition. Climate change and environmental issues aren't just something we can afford to detach ourselves from. Climate change does not only affect animals, it destroys ecosystems and natural resources, but has lethal effects on humans all over the world. In our area, hundreds of people have already died in deadly forest fires and sudden heat waves of last summer. Climate change destabilizes Earth's atmosphere, exacerbating natural resources, natural disasters such as droughts, fires, floods, hurricanes, et cetera, that destroy lives, forcing families to relocate, and it's essentially affecting marginalized communities. The Evergreen Public School Board should not only act to do your part to save the planet, but because you owe it to the children you are preparing for the future. Evergreen Public Schools should not only shape the future through education, but it's also your responsibility to protect our future. A quality education is of little use in an uninhabitable world. This is your opportunity to build a better future, to give us a chance for a habitable planet, not only for Evergreen students, but for our children and for generations to come. Thank you.
Hello, Evergreen School District Board of Directors and Superintendent. Oh, sorry. I am Tyler Smith, a student from Henrietta Lacks High School, Hila, and there is a rising issue that we also need to address: climate change. Climate change is a slow but devastating disaster that will creep its way into affecting our lives more and more. For example, according to data from 2001, 2011, and 2021, the average temperature during the years have dramatically increased, have slowly increased, making it warmer, hotter summers and warmer springs. And this was most evident during last June, during the heat wave, which temperatures rose to around 110 to 120 degrees, causing many lives to be lost during the event, especially those of marginalized communities. And while the top 100 companies produce over 71% of all global emissions, we can still strive to make a change locally by setting goals for the Evergreen School District to be carbon neutral by 2040, along with replacing worn-out diesel school buses with new electric ones. If we set these goals and make these changes, we can help our climate, reduce emissions, and make our planet better for future generations. Thank you for your time.
Will you allow me to speak? Can I continue?
Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bella Williams, and I am a senior at Henrietta Lacks High School. I would first like to thank everyone for their time, and for everyone who spoke earlier, and for the privilege to be here and speak on an important topic. The first bulleted point in the Evergreen School District's Declaration of Beliefs document states, "We believe in a school system where no child is expendable. Every student, without exception, has the potential for growth, improvement, and success in life." Although these statements remain true for current students, I wonder whether or not achieving these ideals after high school is possible. I wonder whether or not success and improvement are even possible while living on a dying planet. I wonder whether or not in 30 years, there will be air clean enough to breathe, whether or not my peers or my own children will ever know of a summer without wildfires or even know what a koala is. But part of me knows the answer to all of these questions. There seems to be no success for my generation without systemic change. I urge you today to keep the Evergreen School District promise, that without exception, every single past, current, and future student of Evergreen Public Schools will have the opportunity of growth, improvement, and success in life, starting with a healthy planet. As you may know, as of February of last year, Seattle Public Schools became the first district in the state to commit to transitioning to 100% renewable energy sources by 2040. We know, we now know that lowering fossil fuel emissions within the school district is possible by transitioning to electric appliances, carbon-free heating and cooling systems, changing light bulbs to LEDs, and when shopping for new school buses, opting for zero-emission vehicles. The question is no longer how or why we need to save the planet, but when? And I know what you all may be thinking, that we are naive, that we don't know what it takes to reduce emissions within just 18 years. You can't just completely alter the infrastructure and budget of the entire district. It's just not that simple. But the climate crisis is an emergency, and it needs to be handled like one. We have solutions, we just need you to enable action. I can promise you that the small group of teenagers I came here with today will be incessant. We will be annoying, we will be dramatic, and we will be whatever it takes for change to happen. Thank you.
All right, next up is Margaret Hunter.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. My name is Margaret Hunter. I am a visual arts teacher at Covington Middle School and a community member as well of APS. I'm here to speak about the ELL newcomers program. As I have been teaching ELL newcomer students for the past 15 years at Covington, I watched them come with no language, English skills, they can't read in English, they can't write in English, and oftentimes, they leave in months to return to their home schools because of the fantastic program that we have at Covington. When I started learning PSYOP, for those of you that you don't know, the Sheltered Instruction Observational Protocols to help students with language that have high difficulties with English, I was given what's called the ELL experience. My ELL experience was with 15 coworkers that I trusted completely in one room. Students' ELL experience is walking into a building with a thousand or more other kids. You don't know how to ask to find the bathroom, even though you know what bathroom symbols look like. You can find the bathrooms when you walk through the hallways, but when you're in the classroom, you're not quite sure how to ask to go to the restroom. So although the facilities are available, the supports to help you access the facility are absent. As I think about the things that our newcomers will be missing out on with their program being dismantled, I sat and talked with the Vice President of our union for a while about it. We discussed how it is best practice to keep kids at their home schools, and that data shows that. But it doesn't say it's best practice to keep them there without supports. So as I look at my time that's dwindling, the kind of supports I get at Covington are one person for their families to contact and communicate with. As we string our ELL kids out at all six different middle schools, that support will be gone. They will be communicating with multiple people, if they get communication at all. So when I heard you, Boyd, say, "I personally will take over this, working to get this program and these supports out to these schools," my question and the question for the staff of the ELL newcomer secondaries is when? It's obvious the decision was made because of finances. Sitting down at the table with the people that have built this program and made it a success for students should be happening not now, not this summer, but yesterday, before the call was made that their program was going to be dismantled. Asking teachers to teach a workload at the school, and then also support across the district, is again, like, people have been talking about taking a job away and then asking it to be done by somebody that also now has a new one. So what I would ask is for the supports to be actually supportive, not lip service, but those kids and those families have people at their schools that they can go to, that are experts, that someone will communicate with the teachers about the fact that this student may not be able to ask for the restroom, they may not know how. I know how communication is lost when these types of specialty programs are spread, and I would hate for the thinness of this program to impact the students and families that need it the most. Thank you.
All right, Don Stanki.
Hi, Don.
Hello, thank you, everybody. My name is Don Stanki. I'm a retired science teacher, taught 43 years, mostly at Camas High School and Fort Vancouver High School. I'm basically here because I was invited by the students, Bailey Cunningham from Hila, Henrietta Lacks School, invited me to speak at their environmental science, environmental club meeting about two or three weeks ago, and, because they were concerned about climate change. And why did they invite me? My team was the team that led the effort in the City Council of Vancouver to commit to a goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. I asked them to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions 50% by 2030 to match the state goals, but they wanted to make it 80% to reduce, reduce emissions 80% by 2030 in a, community-wide, in the city of Vancouver. And I realized that could not happen if the Evergreen School District, and if the Camas and the Van, not the Camas, but the Vancouver School District, didn't also participate in that. And so I'm here to ask you to put it on a future agenda item, to set a goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, at least to match the state goals, 50% below pre-current levels by 2030. Now, I heard that Seattle has done this, and Portland has also done this, and why did Portland do this? Because they realized that Congress is never gonna act, because there are too many senators from coal and oil states to ever act. Joe Manchin, for example, owns a coal mine. He's not gonna give up that. And, and, and so we have to act at the local level. And so I appeared before the school board, five of them, about five years ago, when you were starting your building program, and I urged you at the time, I believe, to install heat pumps in your new electric heat pumps, instead of gas fossil fuel heating systems in your new schools. And, and I don't know what, what happened, but I didn't have time to follow up on that because I was working on the oil terminal fight here in Vancouver. And I believe at the time, I suggested that if you install fossil fuel heating systems, you might regret it, because the state's gonna eventually impose a carbon tax, or some sort of penalty, on the pollution you create by burning natural gas in your schools. And, and that bill, those bills got passed. The Climate Commitment Act is basically a cap and trade program like California has. The Clean Fuels Program is basically like another cap and trade program for vehicle fuels. So it's gonna cost you money now for mistakes you made in the past. And so I'm gonna send you my complete comments in an email, but encourage you to set a goal and, and then develop a plan. I'm on the plan, I'm on the committee for the city of Vancouver to develop a plan there, and, but it needs to happen everywhere, at every level of government. So, thank you, and we'll see you around.
Thank you, Don. All right, next is Jonathan Lawrence.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Jonathan Lawrence. I have a daughter at Covington Middle School. You met her, her name is Michaela Lawrence. My other daughter spoke, that was Miss Chambers. And I'm here to support the Equity Program. I really believe that it's a program that is needed for the district. I'm a father, I'm a member of this community. My daughter is the student at Covington, and when she comes and says, "Dad, I have a problem at school," and we find out that it's a problem that's considered race, racism. And so we believe that this program will work. My wife volunteers, Vanessa Lawrence, at the school. My daughter is the student there, and they work together at the school, just for change. And so I'm here really to ask the board if, if, if you see how important this is. Look at us, we're, we really believe that this program will work for this district, for this community. And we just really urge you to really reconsider the, reconsider the shutting this program down. So I, I'm here really, I'll volunteer, whatever I could do to help keep this program going, I'm willing to do that. So I'm just making myself available. I don't have all the answers. I know that you had to do cuts, I, I'm sorry it had to be at that, at that program. But I'm here really to help, to, to be a positive member of this community, to really help, whatever way I can. So please reconsider on cutting this program.
All right, next speaker is Tiffany Rando.
Hey, good try. It's really hard. Good evening, board members. My name is Tiffany Rando, and I'm the instructional coach at Mountain View High School. I'm also a member of the District Equity Advisory Council and a co-leader of the White Affinity Group. This is my fourth year working in Evergreen School District and my 13th year as an educator. I've never been more proud of this district than when, last year, our district chose to support our equity work by hiring equity advancement specialists, bolstering the work of the inimitable Clarissa Hightower. Tonight, I'd like to speak personally, locally, and immediately about the need for equity advancement specialists. My building has great need for support from the district in our equity work. Our data in every facet of school tells us that our kids are, not all our kids are being served. Academically, we find that 80% of our Latino students are not enrolling in our most rigorous course pathways. That AP program you love so much, that means there's a 30% disparity between our white students and our Latino students enrolling in AP. These students rank poorly for preparedness in college and careers. The fix for that includes what our equity policy calls for: identification and removal of barriers that make outcomes predictable by race. Carissa, who spoke earlier, our assigned specialist, is instrumental in that work. She's the only and primary contact to the high schools from the Equity Department. That work that we have to do begins with listening to kids. Her help this year in designing learning experiences for teachers included helping us design empathy interviews that explored student experiences and microaggressions that she told you a little bit about. Through this work, our staff heard from kids about how implicit bias and implied those standards set students up for exclusion, both disciplinary and academic. I believe when my staff knows better, they're gonna do better. And the work of specialists is to help us uncover what we don't know, and to tap into and bring forward the experiences of our most marginalized students. Without continued support from specialists, my work's impossible. I need a dedicated expert to bring forward resources- I need a dedicated expert to bring forward resources, training, feedback and coaching in equity. If I'm going to continue to move MBHS toward equitable outcomes for all students, I need them. This data could not be more clear. Our overwhelmingly white staff is not serving students of color. Our recent youth truth data reveals that all students identifying as people of color are proud of their schoolwork more than their white counterparts are. They don't feel connected to teachers. They don't feel seen as whole people by our white staff and they are less likely to feel that their teachers believe in them than their white counterparts. Nothing should be more disturbing than this data. Nothing should be higher priority than the removal of these barriers. We've made gains since I first got here, but we've only just begun. I can't overstate my disappointment to hear we've neglected our adopted equity lens and our cuts this year. I implore you to do more than lip service to the equity operational policy and reinstate our equity advancement specialists. When we talked about how this wasn't a targeted cut, we have to remember that systemic racism is a product of standard operating procedures. So no, DEI is targeted in these cuts. Because when we default to making decisions without our adopted equity lens, we fall prey to standard operating systemic racism. Thanks.
All right, Gary Wilson.
Thank you. The Evergreen Yes For Schools campaign essentially bought the April election with two mass mailings in three weeks and almost 100,000 registered voters each time, as well as door knocker flyers, hundreds of signs, advertising. The voters of the Evergreen School District were basically brainwashed approximately $50 to 1 into voting for the second attempt at a levy that previously lost by over 3,600 votes. The initial count on election night was razor thin and admitted you were sweating it out as there were 10,916 yes votes to 10,633 no votes, showing a lead of only 283 votes. However, the second mass mailing occurring on the last week of the election and ballot harvesting at elderly care facilities had its effect on the ballots counted after the initial return as the yes votes took a more commanding lead. Any candidate, referendum, levy or initiative would typically win by a landslide given the same 50 to 1 ratio. That said, it should tell you something. Personally, I was more concerned about getting the truth out to voters and parents and grandparents than I was whether the levy passed or failed. I know this levy funds some needed supports in extracurricular activities. The question comes in though, how do we affect change when the school district and school board only cares about agendas and not the quality of education the district is giving our children? As stated in an earlier op-ed in the Voters' pamphlet, 80% of ESD students are failing math and 60% are failing English per OSPI. Contrast Camas Schools District where well over half are passing math and 70% are passing English. You talk tonight about the strategic plan and these poor percentages. How about a direct approach? I've asked this board multiple times to do an analysis looking at which math students are passing and failing the math standards and to see if there's a pattern identifying which teachers are successful and which are not. Or does this board actually believe Camas students are two to three times smarter than Evergreen students? The pathetic percentages of students meeting standards have been shared at several board meetings with no response until one of us mentioned recently that we will actively work to defeat your levy. That got this board's attention instantly. Why? This board and the district strangely could care less about how poorly they're teaching academics. However, they do care about two things. They care about teaching and agenda and they care about the money. Of the 32,000 spent on the yes campaign, the PDC lists donations totaling 27,000 of which over 25,000 or 94% of the donations came from a janitorial service and engineering and construction firms that either worked directly for the district or would benefit directly from future contracts with the school districts. Sort of a, scratch my backs, I'll scratch yours. Has this board listened, or had this board listened and worked with us? They may not have had their first levy fail miserably and cost the district 29 million over the next three years. One well worded and factual opposed statement that was mailed in with the ballot was all it took. If this board continues on its present course, we will continue to educate the parents, grandparents and voters about the poor education their ESD students are receiving. Thank you. Also, I was just going to ask, how do I fill out an instructional materials committee application since it's going to be voted on after the recess? I know I called in once about that, about getting on a review committee and never basically heard back.
We'll have somebody follow up with you on that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary. All right, so that concludes our citizen comments. The board will go into a brief recess. We'll, then we'll reconvene in a board workshop where we will have an instructional materials committee, review committee applications. We'll get legislative updates and then we will go into an executive session, potential of a pending litigation. Thank you. All right, we're going to get started. We're going to go ahead and start with the legislative update. So I'm going to turn it over to Director Perkins.
I was trying to pull up the positions that we discussed during the legislative committee meeting, in which, I'll do that after. In which we evaluated and recommended or didn't recommend the different legislative positions that have been proposed. And I was hoping to take away, I have to find the document that we, yeah, they don't put it in the same places that Evergreen does in board docs, so. Give me that moment. I might even have to search my email. But I could start with the one that's, I guess, most recent. I had a discussion with one of the directors up in Puget Sound area is that they're, we're going to get WASDA to agree to advocate for a change in election years for school board directors to the, to the positive, or no, the even numbered years rather than the odd numbered years. And there's a rationale behind that. And so I'm curious about your gut feeling with that kind of position. I'd like to be able to represent the whole director area accurately.
So would that put people who are presently in for like a five-year term?
It looks like the proposal that Rep. Gregerson, I think it's Rep. Gregerson, put together as a bill contains something like that. But the data that they showed us in the claims came from one source and I really didn't want to advocate for Waukeaham County or Clark County or Lewis County without having a broader picture. So I'm working with Karen Chase.
What is their primary reason behind it?
Their reasoning and claim is that especially persons of color vote more consistently in even numbered years. Younger voters vote consistently in even younger years and we're missing those opinions.
Is it because they're, are those general elections?
Yeah, it's the general election things. The proposal right now would not force our bond and levy special elections into even numbered years. They would still happen. But yeah, I was just kind of conflicted about supported. I actually moved do not pass on it and mostly to preserve the idea, to reconsider it if the arguments were actually stronger than the ones that were being presented.
I'd have to see some more information that gave me the rationale and, you know, what's the advantages and disadvantages of the thing.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, I can see the point if the data actually shows a greater proportion of people in disadvantaged communities.
Oh, yeah. I feel like there's a, well, because the, well, I guess it would be every four years, the presidential election.
Needs to be like 24, 26, 28. And it won't take effect for a number of years. Not familiar with all the details, but it's out there somewhere. And the question becomes whether WASDA should weigh in on it. We also, I guess speaking just in general, the disconnect between the way small school districts operate and large school districts like ours is very evident and we know that WASDA's general assembly is driven by individual board members. So they've, they're working on ways to amplify that voice. And we could end up in the minority for our needs unless we're paying attention and including as well. It's another, I guess, dimension of inclusion that.
Well, the other thing too is.
Should make some things possible, yeah.
I'm going to bring up a touchy subject, but that's compensation. It's never been changed in the years I've been on the board. And, and that is a difference. I mean, I don't know, the difference between a large district, small district, I don't know.
They are looking at that, aren't they?
Board compensation?
I thought they were.
There's an existing legislative position at WASDA to support legislation calling for the school director salaries. The exact wording isn't coming, but there's been a lot of proposals to just raise that to the same salaries that part-time city councillors are making in small towns and let the salary commission adjust that. And there's pros and cons to that, but I know people who experience hardship because they're school board directors and thinking of Drayton Jackson up in Central Kitsap and a couple of other people who, one adjustment to his circumstance and he wouldn't be able to do so. And it's, it's something that's born of the frictions and the barriers that stand in the way of people who experience poverty.
Well, and I think about like younger family, you know, younger people that have small children. Because when I was first on the board and had to have kids and have, pay for a babysitter, I was in the hole every time.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that's a barrier though to people running for election and being on this is, you know, so those are just things I think about.
What's nice to see is an equity lens in the rationales for the positions. I don't have any information about potential bills. It's not quite that concrete yet. But we're meeting again in May virtually in order, this is May. We're meeting in a couple of weeks virtually in order to revisit some of the positions and so forth. So if you've got, I'll find the document and forward it to everybody. And if you've got points of feedback or know somebody in another district who really should be weighing in, there are a couple of positions that I can ask to reconsider because of the way the vote went. And we can, we can make some motion on that. It's kind of indirect, but getting all those voices included is something that's been on my mind.
Yeah.
We did a lot of good work with the safety position and it got higher priority and resonates with some of the things that the citizen comments, commenters were talking about. I just hate it when the system hides our hearts. It's no fun to experience that. And that's about all I have from like a board director kind of legislative rep perspective. John, do you have anything legislative-wise? Okay. Then that's, that's what I've got. Looking forward to your feedback. I think we meet in three weeks, two weeks or three weeks. Can't believe May is almost half over.
Right. Thanks, Rob. All right, Rebecca's going to come up and we're going to do the instructional review committee. We have applications.
As promised and as asked by the board and as promised by us, we are delivering on some instructional materials committee applications for you tonight. Workshop tonight and then bringing them forward for your approval at the next meeting. So what you will see, and I won't go over them in detail, but in front of you, you have elementary one, elementary two and elementary three as applications. And then you have secondary one, community one and community two. And those are the applications that we have received thus far for these positions as indicated by policy, I'm sorry, procedure 2020P. Do you want to take a minute to review those and then see if you have any questions for me?
The application window for these appointments is closed now?
Well, it isn't exactly, I mean, we've been doing recruiting, so it isn't exactly that kind of a window as, as things, you know, we hope to fill all the positions so there wouldn't be any open positions after the board takes action. But, you know, we always seem to be in the case. I don't know about Evergreen so much, but in many places, people have to leave a committee for one reason or another. So the application, you know, we may reopen applications to try and fill a position which has been vacated.
Okay, so it's not as rigid as a window of time. I had a citizen ask me about that and wonder if they could still make an application, fill out a form.
Is, so the question I have is, how did we advertise so that as many people as possible that might want to do this would be aware of the applicant process?
Well, so we sent it to all of our principals. I'm looking at Lori because she's supportive with this. She's, we sent it to all of our principals, asked them to disseminate it to our school communities. People reached out within their personal networks to encourage people to apply. Anyone who has been attending or listening to board meetings has certainly heard about it. So those are some of the ways.
So the, we have how many positions open? I just make sure I'm.
As of recently, we have not had any community or parent vol, parent input. So we have two community and two parent open at this time.
So there are two elementary open, two secondary open, or are those, okay. And two community open?
Correct.
All right. Excellent. By the way, congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
When do they normally convene the meetings? Are they during the day or in the evenings?
They are at 4 o'clock, I believe we said on the application and we asked people to, oh, I see, I'm available after 4:00 PM. You know, we try to work around people's schedules, I think, but we do have teachers on these committees as well and we don't typically get subs. So typically they would be at the end of the school day sometime, not keeping people hopefully into the evenings where it may conflict with other things, but late afternoon. And this committee does not always meet on a regular schedule because they only meet when needed. So if we have some kind of a challenge to curriculum, this is a committee that handles that or if we have instructional materials to review.
So tonight, we're just reviewing these applications.
That's correct.
And then are we going to vote at our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have any kind of a rubric or anything as to what qualifies somebody to be a good candidate?
So we.
Or any guidance or anything like that?
Short answer is no. We scoured your past practice. I was not, I, you know, obviously haven't looked for candidates in the two months that I've been here. Really couldn't see how you had taken this on in the past. I think probably typically you don't have such an overwhelming number of applicants that it's really been, been necessary to do that.
So one of my questions, they answer the question, are you a resident of Evergreen School District? They say yes. If they said no, that would disqualify them, right? Regardless if they're parent or.
That's correct. We do ask that people be members of the community or, well, no, I don't think that's true about a parent. If they have a boundary accepted child into the district.
But out of the district?
Out of the district, boundary accepted child in the district, they would be a parent in our district.
But community member has to be?
Yes.
And then how do we verify these addresses? Do we do that after? Like, because if somebody, because they're anonymous, so somebody was selected and they didn't live in our boundary?
We have the information about who they are and we can certainly check on that.
Has that been verified?
Yes, we've redacted their, their information for your perusal at this time.
What's that? Okay.
I think the last reading of my, of the IMC statute that I did imposed only the requirement that parent representatives not form a majority on the committee. That was explicitly called out. I think everything else about it is flexible.
One of these that we have here, it says they're a parent, but then it says that their kids were very successful in the district and they want this tradition to continue with their grandchildren who currently attend, so are they...
I've only just received these, so we have an application, I, I'm sorry, I did not have a chance to, before I brought these forward to you, to look at several of the applications. And elementary three does say out of school and then they're listed as elementary, so yeah, so I don't, that may in fact be a community applicant rather than an elementary.
Yeah.
It may have been a mischaracterization on our... Thank you, we'll look forward to getting...
Still receive some if any come forward before we make our final vote?
Well, I think we need to go back to workshop rather than taking a vote next time to bring those to you, rather than introducing one for the first time at the vote.
Do Jenny and Jackie have these? The two fresh ones?
Two is that they, they aren't seeing these two that just came in tonight.
So do you want more workshop? What if, what if we didn't receive any more before the next board meeting?
Well, that's one thing, but if we do...
Then we could workshop it at the next.
I do think it's likely, I'll just plant the seed, that we will be moving forward with a process, a challenge process, without parents then. Because we're a month out, we will be a month out from having a vote on this, so if we workshop again next week, or in two weeks, and then we wait, I, I do believe that we may have an instructional materials, a challenge, two materials coming, and we would move that forward, that process forward without parent or community members.
Do you know if that's a library challenge or a textbook challenge?
I don't have the details, honey, yet. I've just been given some foreshadowing that we may have a, and, you know, we'd like to move those forward.
So our preference is to get people on the committee to work with that?
Well, that would be my advice if the board gets a two-star preference, but it would be my advice that we try to get a, a full committee. We've really done kind of a full court press on trying to get people to apply here over the last period of time. I know that some...
I feel like since we took some today, that eliminated some people from being able to have also...
Well, couldn't we, couldn't we leave it open? If we get more, we could review them as they come in, because it's not like we're going to discuss them all, like, we all are going to vote independently based on what we read in their application.
So, okay, so here's a question. If we have, because we have so few applicants, and if we see one that we don't feel they're qualified to be doing it, do we have to fill it with...
No, then we could just leave, I believe we could leave the position open and continue to...
Okay, so we can leave an open spot if we feel like somebody doesn't qualify?
Okay. But I guess the question is, do we want to accept more applications between now and the next two weeks and still be able to vote on this at our next meeting so we can have parents and community members join the committee right away? I would say, I mean, I think that would be my preference in that we can just review them as they come in. Because I don't think we have to, I don't think we need to have another meeting to, just so we can have all the applicants at once.
Well, I'll commit to reading what comes in as it comes in.
Yes. So what is the date on that? Wednesday the 18th? Wednesday the 18th?
Sounds good.
End of day.
And Jenny and...
Jenny.
And Jackie, you're okay with that?
What was the decision? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what was said off the side.
That we put the end of day next Wednesday, five o'clock?
Deadline?
As the deadline, and then we review them independently as they come in and then we're ready to vote at our next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I agree with that. I would just like to say that not all the applications are loaded in board docs, so I don't have access to all of them. But I just sent Lori an email asking her to send them to me.
Yeah, two were just given to us tonight that were just filled out here at the board meeting.
We can send out...
That's what I figured, that's, so, yeah. So if I can get those emailed, then I'll be prepared as well.
We'll make sure you get a full packet at that time of all of them together. How's that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think that ends our board workshop, so we are going to adjourn and then we're going to go into an executive session. Thank you very much for attending this evening.